Yeah, exactly.
Should I move over?
She's just for the day.
Move over to the nameplates.
Fifteen, okay.
It's okay when you have Mr. Bush as your take that name. We're gonna give him his own nameplate.
It's fine with me.
Hello, Ms. Collins.
Hey, how are you?
She's okay. She got out today and shifted her room to be at. Yeah, so she'll be in the rehab for another ten days.
Fantastic. Good news.
Thank you. How was the college tour?
Okay.
Good, but it was awesome.
Like a start? Okay.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the North Brunswick Township Board of Education, our regular public meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 30th. Could we all please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Enter the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Carter. Ms. James. Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori. Dr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and Wednesday, November 27, 2024, in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick; mailed to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly elected board members. Good evening, everyone. Good to see some folks out in our audience tonight and good to see all of my team up here. Some of my team is missing, but they will be at our next meeting. So at this point, we have a couple of presentations, so I will turn it over to you, Dr. Zakowski.
Thank you, Madam President, and this is our annual Violence and Vandalism Report. One thing, I just want to give some context to our millions of viewers and board members, that this is a requirement that we hold ourselves accountable, but we report all incidents. And over the years, one thing I'm very proud of here in North Brunswick, that we never shied away from reporting the incidents and defining it as it should be defined. So what you see is the good, the bad, and the ugly in terms of we can't get better if we don't report and understand where the numbers are going. So we use this data as a way to make sure that we're gonna get better and we're gonna try to eliminate all violence and vandalism, but one thing I want to assure the public and, of course, the board, is that we will always be fair, open, honest, and with our numbers and our reporting of the data. So no one more fair, open, and honest than Ms. Kita. Ms. Kita?
Oh, thank you, Dr. Zakowski, and thank you, board. As Dr. Zakowski mentioned, this is a requirement by the state to report out our numbers concerning incidents in the schools, including harassment, intimidation, and bullying for the reporting period of the first part of this calendar year, but the second part of the school year, January 1st to June 30th. The data can also be found, as you know, in the agenda this evening, but as Dr. Zakowski said, and as you are familiar with my presentations on this, I do provide context with it that goes with the numbers for even more in-depth explanation. So these are the numbers that we are required to report out in public, which are on the agenda tonight. And again, the way the state does this is they report, they have you compare it to the prior reporting period from that following year. I will also be providing context comparing the entire year, 24-25, to the 23-24 school year. But as you can see, these numbers have significantly decreased, which we are extremely happy about. As Dr. Zakowski said, we always are going to continue to get that number as low as possible. But in comparison to the prior year, I mean, we went down, you know, from 153 to 93 incidents reported. It does describe the types of incidents such as HIV confirmed, damaging school property, substance abuse, weapons, physical altercations. So we are, we were very pleased with these numbers, as you can see why. Same thing with the other incidents leading to removal. You know, we have worked in our schools, our principals, our school administrative team have worked very hard on getting kids in school. Tardiness, cutting class, insubordination, those types of incidents have also, as you can see, they almost were reduced by 100 from the prior year, from the same reporting period. HIV alleged, although the number went up, that just, these are unfounded HIBs from the first reporting period, but they were, on its surface, enough to proceed to investigate. So, and, you know, even though that number went up, it was, those were unconfirmed. HIV trainings, we did increase in the second, from the prior year. And again, a lot of that also comes with what the state offers. And we have seen increase in more trainings, even in the second half of the year, offered by the state, offered by our own administrators to staff. Because again, those behaviors, we tend to increase towards the end of the school year. Our HIV programs in our schools, which are also listed for you in the agenda, also increased from last year. And again, as I said, total number of incidents that decreased by 66 from the prior school year in total. The number of HIV confirmed for the total school year is 37, which is 15 less than the prior year as well. So we're seeing those numbers come down. Other incidents leading to removal decreased by 192 from the prior school year. And our HIV and training programs increased by a total of 50 for the school year. Some other numbers that, although we're not required to report out that I would like to share with the board is total confirmed HIBs for the school year this year. We only had one at one elementary school. The other elementary schools did not have any, which is great. Linwood had 10, the middle school had eight, the high school, which does have four grade levels, had 19. But again, we're still looking at 15 less total than we had the year before. And we're still continuing to see our elementary schools with hardly any HIV cases, whether they were alleged or confirmed. Just as a reminder to what, to the public, to our board, HIV reporting forms are state mandated. They're actually a state form. They're called 338 forms. And two school years ago, the state, the Department of Education, under the Anti-Bullying Rights Act, put an amendment in place that if the HIV allegation is outside the scope of the definition, on its surface, does not have to be investigated through the full HIV process. So the school can determine if they will proceed or not proceed. And we do have to report that number out. It's also on the agenda. In a total of 23 submitted HIV claims total for the district, we're preliminarily determined as not proceeding, that they did not meet the scope of the definition on its surface. But again, that does not mean that these claims are not investigated as other incidents in the school, and they are. Disciplinary remedial measures are enacted. Although we're not required to report this out, I do put this in for the board to see and the public, just examples of consequences at the schools and examples also of remedial measures. We are promoting positive behaviors in our schools, and we really have taken great steps to restorative justice and restorative practices in our school. And just wanted to have, have some here for you listed as well. And this will be publicized on our website. Just samples of the trainings that happened during the second part of the year, whether they were in district or at a district. Again, I have mid-year reviews with the anti-bullying specialists, which are instructional deans in our schools. I also have one-on-ones with them. Besides my required reporting period to full training with them, I meet with each one of them one-on-one to talk about any current cases, any questions they have, things of that nature. And again, we also do monthly security training for all our substitute staff. And although it's not part of what the state may call HIV trainings under their definition, I always find it important to point out other trainings related to student behaviors that our staff participate in. I will tell you right now that more than half of these are our own courses that we offer PD, offered by our own administration and teachers that provide to our other, to our staff, which is great. And lastly, as required to report out, it is in the agenda, all of the elementary programs related to HIV under the state definition that took place between January and June, middle school and high school. And again, with the elementary, that is all four elementary schools, plus the ECC, plus Linwood. So that's why it, you know, it's not like they're doing all this, but our other two school, two grade levels aren't. It's just because it incorporates all six of those schools. And again, you know, very proud of the work we've been doing. We continue to get those numbers down, and we, like Dr. Zakowski said, we're not gonna stop, obviously, till we get them as low as we possibly can. And like to thank the board for their support. You know, we did roll out those yonder pouches at the middle school this past year. We did see a decrease in behaviors and HIBs at the middle school. And Mr. Neller, our high school principal, who is here, also enacted a cell phone policy at the high school this year, and we did see those numbers decrease as well. So at this time, my presentation is over, but I'm open to any questions from the board.
If you don't mind me asking, I mean, congratulations, first of all. These are great numbers tremendously, you know, great job. Do you feel that all the bullies left, or is it like, do we get stricter consequences? I mean, I'm just curious to know.
You know, that's a great, that's a great question. And I really do believe it's a combination of a few different things. We have been seeing, which is why I think we're, we're seeing that trend come out of the elementary schools is, and again, we're five years now out of COVID, right? But I think we are seeing that impact, that these, that the students now, who are in elementary schools, even, you know, coming into Linwood now, they're now used to being back in school and used to a school routine. Where we've had that gap where students who were, you know, at home for COVID, which all were, but they were in those formative years of, of not having that structure. I think that's a big part of it. You know, we saw the trend of last year, the least amount of incidents were elementary and into fifth grade. Then the gap, and then we saw more of them, six to nine this past year, the year before it was set. Like, they are, for lack of better words, aging out almost of it. And I do think a lot has to do with our, we do, you know, amped up our trainings, our programs, and our, you know, positive behavior practices in our school have really made a big difference.
Got it. Well, congratulations. Great job.
Thank you. And I want to publicly thank my instructional deans, our anti-bullying specialists, our school admin. They are, you know, really, we all just work as a team and to get this work done. And we're glad that we're making a difference, and we will continue to do so.
Thanks, Ms. Kita. So I'm gonna take a little credit because this is gonna be approved under, I'm now superintendent. So it does go on my resume. I just, so I'm glad the data is important and went, went down. But I just want to answer more to that. First, I want to say thank you, Amy, for your leadership in, in the district. This is a concerted effort. However, I think the question was, or I heard the comment, did the bullies leave?
Yeah.
We, we look at bullies, it's, discipline is about changing behavior, and it's a lot of work. It's consistent work. And I think the bullies are leaving the behaviors of bullies, right? And to further that, next August 13th, we have our committee of the whole. I, I do wanna, and I'll thank Rosa, Ms. Hock, for helping me and helping the board as we restored some of the serious cuts we were worried about for special ed and our mental health awareness. And a lot of those issues about changing behavior isn't a special ed-related, but some of the programs we're getting through University Behavior Health, we're bringing on some other professionals that will work with our staff, will be on the ground, in the boots on the ground. And so although the victims are very important, that we make sure they get the help and families get the help, it's equally as important to eradicate this ongoing behavior because we're a public school and we have our responsibility for all students.
Absolutely.
So we, we, I feel, what I see with the programs being restored and focus being to take a look at, you know, we know academic well-being is a focus, but the mental health and well-being of students is just equally important from both sides. So I like to say the bullies are leaving because of the concerted effort of the behaviors that we're trying to change. Because it's not about discipline. It's really about changing behavior as students are growing through our program. So more to come and more to hear about the companion programs of what we're doing as a district because, you know, bullying is a very serious issue throughout the state of New Jersey. Very serious. And it's something that has to stay the course and steady our, our actions and make sure this consistent behavior is carried out pre-K to 12.
Yes, agreed.
So I would thank, again, the numbers are great, but our, our behaviors will continue as we try to work. So more to come on August 13th, I want to.
Got it. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
To kind of piggyback on that question, is there a way for us to know without going into the details, right, of, of the students? Because that's, you know, personal information. But to kind of understand, you know, when, let's say, in reporting period one, students that had those behaviors crossing over to this reporting period two, are they the same students still having behaviors? Or has it, has it changed and certain, you know, programs and things that have worked for those students so that those behaviors then are gone in reporting period two?
That, Amy, will I, so that question is excellent because it does look at, you're talking about data.
Yeah.
And so have you heard Dr. Salvatore talk about, and what we worked on our board retreat about the integrated focus, you know, aligning our data, what we're looking at data? So that type of focus will help us. Our, you heard so many programs, or you read about all the programs. Our focus, our strategic goal as a district, as a board, is not to waver from what's important to us, which is eradicating, say, bullying and those type of behaviors and, you know, social, emotional health of our students. But it's also taking a look at the data. What does it say about continuing, or what's happening with those students? So we're really gonna dive into that data. And that's gonna be part of that alignment of all the things that we're doing to make sure that, it's great that we have these programs. We believe there's an impact, but diving deeper into data, how much of an impact on each individual child. So, great. I hope that answers it.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
There's one more thing. So just from looking at some of the HIV data, right, that we could see, there's a decent number of cases that are unfounded. So is that, you know, is the reporting higher in a sense of that we're being, as a staff and teacher, we're being more educated and people more vocal about these issues? And that, okay, we're rather report more to be safe? Not saying, you know, trying to cover anything, but be safe and sorry. And then when it actually goes to an investigation, are we seeing that, okay, this sounded like a hit, but when you look at the, the details, it's, it's actually not?
Mr. Ali, that's exactly right. You know, and, and that's part of our training that I have with the anti-bullying specialists is always err on the side of caution. You know, there are some where it is. They can take a look at the preliminary report that comes in and decide with the principle that they don't, it's conflict right off the surface. Although, you know, a, a parent may think it's bullying by, but not by state definition. So, correct. But those that are unfounded, we do proceed with. And it does happen that as they interview witnesses or, you know, through their investigation, see that it is conflict and does not meet the state definition. And that, to your point, is correct. They are trained to also look at, you know, I, I'm, you know, not really sure. And they, and I'll be honest, they consult with me almost on every case, which I truly appreciate to, to help guide them in that. But to your point, that is correct. You're very welcome. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kita, for a great presentation.
Madam President, we continue our presentations, and we have our high school principal. And of course, our, can you give your name and full title?
Absolutely. Hello, everybody. Hello, Dr. Zakowski, board members. This is the team to audience.
There you go.
Today begins our season of assessment reporting. It is a long season, so welcome. We will be reporting on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which our 11th grade students take in March every year. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on the assessment, especially for Mr. Singh, who's our new board member. Some of you may have already, will probably have dismemorized by now, but never hurts to hear it again. And then Mr. Neller is here to share the actual numbers with you, the data, as his staff works hard on these assessments, and he should get the credit for it. So a little background, I did print out the presentation only because sometimes when there's a lot of numbers, it's nice to have it in front of you. The assessment was introduced in 2021. If you remember, right after COVID, the state decided to bring back a graduation assessment requirement with our own state assessment. New Jersey is one of six states that has a graduation assessment requirement. So keep that in mind, okay? It replaced the HESPA. If you've been around a long time, maybe you have children who went through the high school many years ago. The HESPA was the high school proficiency assessment. This assessment is aligned to grade 10 ELA standards and Algebra I and Geometry standards. So some of our 11th graders took those courses in eighth grade, let's say. So they just have to do a little bit of refreshing their memory and hopefully do their best to demonstrate that they're ready to graduate high school in New Jersey. And lastly, which was a controversial thing, the cut score was initially going to be 750 after year one of the assessment, when very few students were passing it, they reduced it to 725. It remains 725, and if that ever changes, I'll be sure to let you know. Okay? So, Mr. Neller, you are up. You do the hard work.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me to come and present tonight. So for this past school year, as Ms. Chang said, students took the test in March. They were juniors. Our results show that in the area of language arts, 75% of our juniors who took the, the test this year were shown to be graduation-ready for this past school year. It is a little bit of a decrease from the previous year. You know, that, in 2024, 78% of our juniors were proficient, determined to be proficient in the area of language arts. So that is something we are gonna be working on this coming school year. But still 75% of the students is a good number for us to work with. And you can see across the demographics how the students perform. Special education is certainly an area that we will continue to, to work with. We have a new supervisor, Mrs. Marks, and she's gonna be really working to try to help students improve their scores. In the area of math, it was 44.2% of students who were determined to be graduation-ready. On the surface, that does not look like a, a great score. However, if you see on the next slide, we actually did improve in the area of math from the previous year. Traditionally, across the state, students perform better in language arts than they do on math on the NJGPA. You can see some of the areas here in math where we did improve. School-wide, student 3% higher performance for students. You know, some of the, there were some minor increases in some of the demographic areas, but there were improvements as well. What we're probably the most proud of is the fact that our ELL students, our English language learners, increased by 4% in terms of passing from the previous year. There are other assessments for students to prove they are graduation-ready, that the state does count. So the state has a number of tiers, so obviously, they would like to see everyone pass NJGPA. However, you know, if the student is, does not pass NJGPA, there are other ways that they can show graduation-ready. So you can see these posted here. You know, PSAT scores, SAT scores, those are things we offer every October, and I always appreciate the support of the Board of Education. We offer the PSAT in school during the school day for every student, grades nine through 11. And then students in grade 12 who still need to meet the passing requirement for their graduation assessment, take it as well. And I, I truly appreciate your support every October with that. We have begun offering the Accuplacer at the high school. So we offered the Accuplacer within the last week, and five students achieved their passing graduation requirements as a result of taking the Accuplacer. We will be offering a fall NJGPA for students who did not achieve the passing score, scores for the math or, or language arts. So they will get another opportunity to take the NJGPA one more time. And then for those students who do not meet the scores either through the alternative assessments or the NJGPA, we do run what's called our portfolio class in language arts and our math lab class in math. And those students take a course. Where at the end of the course in the spring, they complete tasks that are given to us by the NJPOE to show proficiency. We have never had a student not graduate because they did not meet their graduation proficiency. So they can still be shown to be graduation proficient through taking that course and completing those assessments in the spring. Our goal is, you know, we're gonna have at the beginning of the school year, we still have 139 students who still need to meet either the language arts or math or both assessment for graduation. However, as they pass the different opportunities that we offer, we do remove them from those courses. So usually by the end of the school year, it's a small number of students who complete those courses and those tasks that the state gives us. One of the reasons why some of our students are not graduation proficient, we offer the ASVAB every year for students, is the Military Wellness Exam. Our students tend to do very well on it, and it's a difficult exam. But for whatever reason that we're still not completely sure, the state of New Jersey stopped counting ASVAB. So we had students within the last couple of years who were graduation-ready, then had to take another assessment because the state stopped counting the ASVAB. We continue to, as I mentioned, provide students with multiple opportunities to show they are graduation-ready. And as I said, we've never had a student not graduate because they didn't meet their assessment. We will continue to offer students, they will have the opportunity to retake the NJGPA. And then we, we do have at the high school NJTSS Math and Science and ELA and Social Studies data teams. They meet throughout the school year. They are working to identify different skills that's, that our students need work on. And then they're developing different lessons and activities and different assessments that students can take in the classroom to try to better prepare them for the NJGPA. And that work will continue. Our science department supports our math department by implementing different lessons into their coursework to try to help students. And then social studies does the same for English. We also began within the last school year in math and English in our venture programs. So we now have teachers who are dedicated to working with some of our most struggling students coming from the middle school in grade nine. So we have teachers who, for certain periods throughout the school day, will pull students out of their, their study halls and sometimes their math and English classes to work with them on basic skills that they need to bring them up to grade level, but to also prepare them ultimately for these assessments. So that began this past year. So they were working with the current class of 2028. And we're hoping that, you know, in two years, we'll see some improvement in their test scores as they move into that grade level. And that will continue this year, working with the class of 29. Any questions?
I do have a quick question. Thank you all for the data. It's very valuable for us to see, you know, how our students are academically performing. That remains to be the mission for us, to make sure that students are achieving academically. And I know that we have, as a district, you all- And I know that we have, as a district, you all have done several different things to try to address these areas for improvement. One thing that I don't think we've addressed yet or have verbalized on this board is, are we hearing from the students what their thoughts are about the assessment, right? So, if we're talking about all stakeholders, do we have students at the table to talk about what is actually happening in the test and what their feedback is? If any, that might be a way for us to better target it. I feel like we keep trying to take a bird's eye view and actually looking at, oh, well, what are they testing on? Where have they come from? What courses have they taken? You know, how are we offering tutoring? But what are the students actually saying about the test?
No, I think that's
That's great.
You know, teachers do work with students, especially in the math and English classes. They really do try to prepare them for these assessments. And I think that's a good opportunity for them to talk with the kids. You know, I know that our students, especially later in the year, and I think this really impacts our NJSLA performance and also our, you know, performance on the biology test every year. Students feel burned out
Yeah.
from the amount of testing that is required of them. And a lot of it is federal mandates or state mandates that require all this testing. So, I know that is something that students do feel, they feel the burnout. But I think, you know, that's a good opportunity for us to have conversations with them and to continue to try to motivate them to perform as best they can. But I do think that's a great point that I'll bring back to my math and English supervisors.
Thank you, much appreciated.
So, a quick question as well. So, I know, you know, we, we, as committees, we talk about the different overall picture of some of the domains, but over the last few, you know, since I've been here, have we really been digging into looking at like the factor analysis among the domain to see like, okay, this is the bigger picture of the whole score, but like where are we really, I guess, struggling at in within those domains?
Yes. The teachers get opportunities to see that data for their students, for, you know, students, how they performed on assessments for the previous years. We're also, in English and math classes, this year, we're seeing grade nine and 10 students are taking what's called a math assessment, which is given to them three times a school year. And it allows the teachers to get the data very quickly to see where their students are struggling and how they can try to help them improve. Yeah, teachers at the high school, in both math and English, we have grade content level PLCs. So, our Algebra I teachers are constantly meeting Algebra II, geometry, same thing in English by grade level. They're constantly meeting, looking at different skills that need to be emphasized in their curriculum and their lesson plans, so they can try to target these skills that they're identifying in their students.
And are you looking at that from, I know you mentioned coming from like the middle schools to the high school? Are we, because if, you know, if we're doing that later on, sure, it's going to help, but those, you know, the doubling time is the gains. Are we, like, are we targeting that from how, early on, or are we waiting until the red flag starts happening within students?
I think that we're looking at every student. You know, we tend to try to really focus on the kids who are struggling the most to try to give them support so they can catch up with their peers, but I, we are looking at everyone's data.
Thank you.
I got a question for you. I know these assessment tests, right? Not everybody does great on them. But theoretically, you could be a great test taker, you know, with your multiple, multiple choice test or written whatever versus these long assessments. Do we have any type of data that compares them doing regular tests versus these assessments?
I think we could go back and do that. We could look at how they're doing on their assessments in the classroom. I think that's a good point. I think that's something we can look into.
Because, I mean, I've, I mean, I myself, like growing up, and many of the people around me, right, they were like, oh, my God, I'm a B student, I'm an A student, but when I take these assessments, I bomb, whether it's the nerves or, you know, the length of the time. So, maybe, I mean, we're, I'm looking at these numbers, right? We're not too far off from the state average. It's not like we're horrible, but I mean, I don't know if this is something that you guys, I think this is something that you guys should consider, their regular testing versus the assessment.
Absolutely. You know, and we do, we do try to give them practice tests as we can and things like that, but it's hard to prepare them
Right.
you know, for the rigor of that test.
Right.
But we definitely do try, and we will continue.
No, we appreciate your hard work that you're doing, considering the numbers, but you know, just as a thought, I think we can get there.
Well, thank you.
So, the intervention programs that began last year for grade nine, they're continuing again this year, so it will be grade nine and 10 or just grade 10?
It's, it'll be grade nine for this year, we're targeting the grade nine students. But students in grade 10, you know, they do complete the, they did take the math assessment, so those students will do that, and then we'll try to give them targeted support if we can see how they perform on the math assessment.
And one thing I want to, again, work with Mike on this answer, because part of our alignment, our data dashboard, that we want to help create with the high school team, and we want to take a look at that crosswalk between local assessments, state assessments, and to Mr. Ali's point of item analysis of what's really causing that. We're very happy to say that we think that, because we have Linkit as a, they're a data warehouse predictability, predictive type of vendor for us, and it's needed. But we think the next iteration of Linkit data is not just a warehouse, is how do we get down and drive that information to answer those valuable questions? So, Mr. Neller can have that valuable tool for his team to know where to look and where to work and where to focus. Because I could tell you by look, I, we don't need Linkit to be predictive. We know who's going to do well by certain scores and indicators. But it's the why and how do we correct that is always what the dashboards we want to work to create for Mike's team, so we can utilize those resources that he has that we are able to support and know if they're being meaningful and, you know, because that crosswalk is very important. Looking at item analysis is very important, because then if you want to start examining how we meet the standards through the curriculum, seeing those gaps is what we were talking about in, as we look at our next level of strategic execution, so.
And last, last asking question about this, because I know early in the year, when we go over, like we have our academic awards and some of those, we, from our perception, like we do really well, you know, with our high performers and keeping them high and having them achieve, but also like our, our more needy academically, whatever, like students, and we're able to help them improve. But that other, you know, 70, 80% of like the masses, how, and I guess, you know, this is an open question, I guess, for you, but how, you know, do you see us really like honing in on those? Because that is the, the majority of this, you know, data is going to be, is like, you know, where it looks like we're, we're not performing as well, which we are, but it's just, it's hard. So, what does that look like based off of just something like this?
So, you're talking about the students in the academic middle?
Yeah.
So, one thing, what we're doing at the high school, we have what's called our AVID program. AVID is advancement game individual determination. So, we have, it's an elective course for students. And right now, we have about 10% of our student body is enrolled in AVID. And there's two sections on each grade level. So, not, obviously not every student takes the elective. That course is designed to teach skills, students the skills and strategies they need to become college-ready, with the goal in mind that every student in that program, before they graduate, will apply and be accepted to either two-year school or four-year school, trade school, or they will go to the military. We have almost 100% success with that program every year. So, we have what's called our AVID site team, and they are people who are very dedicated to that program. And so, the one thing that we're looking at is a lot of the strategies that they use in those classrooms, we truly believe if we brought them school-wide, that all of our students could benefit from them. And they teach, they teach them skills related to executive functioning, which is, you know, how they manage themselves as students, but it also teaches them writing, reading, different strategies they can use to be better note-takers, things like that. So, we are looking at professional development for our, for our staff, starting this coming school year, that will take those strategies that they're using in that course and encourage teachers to use it school-wide. Because we do think that we can, you know, in that way, we can reach more students and help them prepare, prepare them, you know, for like after high school. So, that's something we really want to do, because the goal of that program is to really reach the students who are in the middle who could get lost and to provide them with the strategies to help them be successful and even encourage them to, motivate them to go, to go higher than they would want to. So, sometimes kids in AVID, they might, they might go through the high school, they might graduate, they might be a college prep kid for four years. But then in AVID, they're pushing them to take honors and AP classes and really to go high, you know, push themselves farther than they would have ever pushed themselves if they didn't have someone there supporting them. So, that's something we're looking to do this coming school year, is to bring that more school-wide over the next few years.
Thank you.
Mr. Neller, you, you brought AVID. I remember you bringing it to the high school, and it's a very valuable program. I would love to even go deeper on that data, because I know it speaks volumes of that hard work and that addressing that middle. We should maybe take a focused look, can it be scaled to the middle school? I have, is there AVID
Well, they do have it
So, they do have it in middle, so good.
They do have it in the middle school.
Good.
But AVID, you know, AVID will tell you they could third K-12 program. So, the idea is to try to even, you know, bring it into the lower grade levels at some point.
Okay, yeah. Because addressing that middle shouldn't begin in ninth grade.
Yeah.
By that time, we're, we're in trouble, you know?
Yeah. It's currently seven to 12. There's an elective at the middle school. And it's been great because it's provided us with a feeder. But I would even love to see it expand into fifth and sixth grade, so
Awesome.
you know, those students start then, moving forward.
But I remember that same question, it wasn't from Mr. Ali, a few years ago, and you were bringing the program, and I believe the question was, can we scale to the middle school side? I haven't seen the great work there yet, so that's good to hear. But I think, looking at it the next step, why not continue to scale it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yesterday's high school, today's middle school.
Yes.
Yesterday's middle school is today's intermediate school.
I was waiting for you to say that, Dr. Z.
I just had a quick question, Mr. Neller. So, 452 students sat for the test, right? And 139 did not meet graduation-ready proficiency, so that's about 30%?
Yeah.
So, do you know if that number has been going down or?
Yeah.
I don't have the exact percentage, but it, it will go down.
Okay.
You know, because like I said, we're going to continue to offer them multiple opportunities to achieve the passing score. So, you know, like I said, they'll take a fall NJGPA, they'll take the PSATs, we're going to be offering Accuplacer again. So, it will go down.
So, then you mentioned that students have test, you know?
Fatigue.
Fatigue, yeah, thank you. So, is there an opportunity to provide, like if we're giving the test in the fall, are we allowed to do that earlier as like the regular timeframe?
There's a time, you have to follow that the state sets, so I'm not sure what.
And have children will take that.
They provide us with a window that we have to give it to them in that assessment. So, like this past year, the window was in March for the juniors, and then the window for NJSLA was in late April. You know, and then right after that, we go into AP testing.
Yeah.
That's hard.
College board is hard.
Yeah.
A lot of times, they're at the end of the year.
And those are all
Well, when, like the college board, that's when students take
the AP testing.
I mean, I think it's just a curious, it's an interesting problem, I think, is trying to capture that data. Like, I think the state, of course, had, you know, wants to understand how our students are doing, and they, you know, mandate standardized testing, because that's an easy way to do it. But ultimately, then, you know, our students are rolling up to a grade, they're getting into ninth grade, 10th grade, and they need to get the content before they're tested, right? So, it's like, at what point is an appropriate point for us to assess them? So, it's just a really interesting issue.
Like I said, I can't stress enough, like, and sometimes students are just, they, they get it later.
Yeah.
You know, especially in high school.
Very true.
You know, and now with my freshmen, it's going to be sophomore.
Yeah.
You know, if I was speaking to him, everything counts.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and kids get it later, and that's why, you know, I'm very proud of the fact that we've never had a student not graduate, because, you know, the state gives them those portfolio tests, and our students are able to complete them to show that they're, that they do have the proficiency.
And that's a win. That should be celebrated, because there, you know, we're probably in a different element than, you know, other schools that are not, they can't provide that data. So, I think that's something that should be celebrated, absolutely.
And I'll just make a quick comment. You know, as you were talking about having like the AVID program available, you know, more wide-scale, I know one of my kids took a study skills course. I don't know, I don't know if that's officially part of AVID, but like, just give a shout out to Ms. Kimelstopp. Phenomenal-like course, you know, just to exactly like you said, you know, teaching about executive skills and study skills and all those things. And really made a huge difference between entering in at ninth grade, not necessarily prepared, and then seeing, you know, progression toward, to the end, as they learned those skills. So, really, it's
No, absolutely. And the study skills course is a special education course, you know, for students with IP, so they're determined to need that support.
Yeah.
But I also, as we get into the graduation rate, you know, in addition to AVID, a couple of years ago, we, you know, we were always really concerned about the kids that are coming that are really struggling. So, we meet with the middle school every spring, and they identify a group of students that they feel could really struggle coming to the high school. So, we, we created a course called STAR, Students Taking Academic Responsibility. So, that course, in grade nine, there's two sections, grade 10, there's two sections. And then we have a junior section, and this past year, we had a senior section, because our goal is to provide them with the support they need to be successful in the high school, or else these are kids who are, might be on track to drop out. And so, we've had success with that. And we don't just release them after ninth grade. If we still feel they need that support, they stay in STAR 10, all the way through senior year. This was the first year, we had a section of STAR 12, this section, this year, we will have a section, but our goal is to get those students, give them the support they need. And the STAR classes follow the AVID curriculum. They're taught, and some of them are being taught by teachers who also teach AVID. So, they're providing the same type of access, the same type of curriculum that AVID students are getting, and students who exit STAR do get the opportunity to join AVID if they choose to. So, that's another way, you know, again, to continue to provide them the support. So, I will, I'm going to present now, shift gears now to our graduation rate for 2025. I have to put it this, I think there's an asterisk when you see the, the score. But there is, I disclaimer, the state will not officially release the state, the scores, our graduation rate until, I believe it's August 28th. So, this is me trying to be a mathematician and calculator. And I hope, I hope I gave you an accurate rate of what I think it's going to be. I've been doing this for a few years, trying to calculate it every summer as soon as graduation's over. So, the state of New Jersey went to four and five-year cohort graduation rates a few years ago. So
Basically, what that means is
that for the four-year adjusted cohort, whenever students come in as a freshman class, so this past
Last school year, we had 522 members in the class of 2025. The largest in school history.
When those students came in as freshmen, they immediately count towards our graduation rate, and that's where the whole idea of everything counts for students.
Those students, we are responsible for them, and that's
what the state uses to determine our four-year rate. They basically count up the number of graduates and divide it by 522. And that's how we determine our four-year rate, every four years. The five-year rate, sometimes students, for whatever reason, do not graduate on time, so the five-year rate calculates and will add, and then sometimes we'll see our graduation rate improve.
I am very excited to say that over the last few years, starting with the class
of 23, every student who was eligible to graduate, graduated. So, we are not going to have any fifth-year seniors next year.
Class of 23 was the first class that happened.
24 continued it, and 25 as well. All right, so how we calculate our graduation rate? So, as I said, we had 522 students in this class. We have one remaining student who did not graduate this past June. We had three non-grads who did not attend graduation because they had to get like the requirement. Two of them were finished in our summer program. The one-third will finish this week. He is an ELL student who came to us from New Brunswick, came April, and behind on credits, but through our summer program, we're going to be able to help him graduate.
Kudos. Kudos.
You know, and that's, that's, you know, I could talk.
Talk for hours about the frustrations of a graduation rate, so.
A student who was in another district for three and a half years, but they enroll in ours, I think, in the middle of their senior year. They, they then become our responsibility to make sure they, they graduate. But he will graduate by the end of this week.
Now, does he or, I'm sorry, I was going to say, does he or she still go into this category or they're not?
He'll count as part of our group.
Okay.
We do, the state also does, they do list students as dropouts. So we do have a small group of students. It's not that, you know, students by law, they can drop out at the age of 16.
We make every effort to try to get them not to. Our guidance department really works with them. We try to enroll them or encourage them if they, if high school just doesn't work for them to look at, you know, adult school or other programs. Mr. Farrell, our guidance director, will even call and try to enroll them in adult school before they leave the high school. Just unfortunately, some students, they just don't take advantage of it. So we did have some dropouts this year.
And then we also, we've put a lot of effort into this, our attendance person at the high school, Ms. Barkley. Once a student leaves our school, we have to have good faith that they're going to go and enroll in another high school.
If they don't, or if for some reason the high school makes a mistake when they enroll them. And some schools in the area unfortunately seem to do it all the time. They, they enroll the kid under a different student ID number. They become what's called for us unverified. And we really.
We try, Ms. Barkley calls parents, she emails, she contacts schools, she tries to track them down.
But unfortunately, every year we do have a few students, you know, that, that fall into this category, we just can't locate them.
And then lastly, they have a category called off track continuing.
And we found in the last two years.
We have a student enroll in East Brunswick Public Schools for one month.
They listed her as a senior, she really should have been a junior. She came to us, we put her in the right grade to benefit her education, and the state counted her against our graduation rate. Because East Brunswick enrolled her as a chief as a senior. When we appealed to the state, they denied it. And we have a similar student in another district. He was held back, which is not something we don't do. So he repeated ninth grade. So right now he's a junior at the high school, but he's counting against the SHS graduation rate because another district held him back.
And then we also have a group of special education students.
We have a wonderful 18 to 21 year old program in our school. Those students are allowed by state law to, to have eight years of high school, to be educated until they're 21 years old. We have a great program for them.
We have seven students in the class of 25 who will be moving into 18 to 21.
But the state counts them against their graduation rate every year. In some years, we could have double digits students going into that program. And we never want to tell them they can't. We want them to have the opportunity for further education, but the state does count that against their graduation rate.
So my point is we can never be at 100% as hard as we try.
But I will tell you that out of 522 students, from my calculations, removing those students that would count against us, I believe we're going to be at 95%.
Well done.
Great job.
So as soon as it comes, it comes out on August 28th, I'll be checking. I'll let everyone know. Yes, I, I do check it all the time. But as you can see, we've hovered for the last four years between 94 and 95%. Dr. Z knows where we were when I became principal.
It's been something that, you know, has become something that's very important to me. I believe very strongly that every, that I tell students all the time, that piece of paper, that diploma, that's your starting point. You can do whatever you want with that piece of paper. You can go to trade school, you can go to college, you can go in the army or the military, you can do whatever you want, but you need that paper to start your, your life. And so that's why we've really worked really hard. And we appreciate the support of the boards for, you know, all the programs we can give students to get them to that point where they graduate. So I do want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Good job. If you want to add to, for the board's information, Mr. Neller, you want to call the perfect storm of being a new principal, of running into challenges. Mr. Neller, you look him up, his picture's there next to perfect storm of challenges. One of the challenges was prior graduation rate was whoever was enrolled senior year, in the beginning of that year, they, whoever graduated, they took that number and that was a graduation rate. So many high schools around the state, well into the 90s, 95%, 98%, and we were well into the 90s. The year Mr. Neller took over, they said, you have four years to graduate, the four year covert. That's why a student was held back, they don't care, they have four years from the start date of a high school. And so if you don't, and that's why the three 18 to 21 program accounts against us. There's no wavering from that. So that four year covert, Mike, Mr. Neller inherited as his, one of his challenges. And to his credit, we rolled up our sleeves and how can we best support the new rules that was suddenly, it's rusted upon, Mr. Neller, during that time. So, Mr. Neller, I'm very happy that it continues to go with the focus on students, right? We said numbers are great, but really we're addressing, hearing stories about someone coming to you in mid April, many high schools wouldn't matter. We know what the Bears of East Brunswick were doing and we took them and you know what, we'll suffer the consequences. But kids matter to you and to this board and to this community. So I just want to say more context of the outstanding job, looking at kids graduating and making sure they graduate.
Definitely.
So the last thing I just want to talk about is our AP testing for this year. So the AP tests are college level tests administered by the college board. We have over 20 AP classes that we offer at MBTHS. The exams are very rigorous, they're meant to be college level exams that students are taking after a year of immersing themselves in college level material taught by their teachers. AP scores are, exams are scored on a scale of one through five. The college board metric for passing is a three. So a three is considered passing, four or a five is generally what colleges will consider to give students credit. Or to give, award students college credit when they enroll in college. An AP exam can be multiple choice, there are, there are some exams that are writing, open ended. And they are all at this point digital. Students are taking them on their Chromebooks. So that's just the, the scoring. Again, three to five is passing, considered passing. This past school year, our students, as have been, has been the trend for the past few years, our students did perform very well on AP exams. 78% of students who took an AP exam received a three or better. Courses where students excelled in 2024, 2025. In AP Biology, 96.4% of students passed or received a three or better in that area. That's 18% above the state average. Calculus BC, we had 92.9% of students who scored a three or better. Dr. O'Reilly is here tonight, she is our AP chemistry teacher, so I just want to congratulate her. Her students, 91.7% scored a three or better. I want to say thank you to her because every year our students continue to thrive on the AP chemistry exam. AP Computer Science A, 92.3%. English Language and Composition, 91.7%. That was an 18% increase from the previous year in the percentage of students who passed with a three or better. Pre calculus, this is only the second year that we offer pre calc. We have two teachers teaching that course because the high number of students have requested it. 100% three or higher in the second year taking that exam. Physics one, and our science supervisor, Mrs. Lampier is here tonight. Physics one in 23, 24, only 25% of students who took the exam passed it. Our teacher, Jim Vialcy, last summer, he spoke to me, he said, I want to really look at the way I'm teaching the class and how I can improve it for students. So he gave up his own time last summer to attend an AP Physics training course. And this school year, you can see the benefits of it. And he said he completely changed the way he taught the class. 96.3% of students received a three or better. The state average was 73.9. 82.4% of the students received a four or better. You know, so you can see the improvement. Not included up here, but Spanish Language and Culture, we had a new teacher to our district teach that course this year. 100% of her students scored a three or better. So we're very lucky to have that teacher, Mrs. Garcia, join us this year because her students did really well with her. And then lastly, in Social Studies, our US A push, United States History, 95.2% of students received a three or better. But we also offer, a few years ago, we used to offer AP Euro, but our students wanted a more global perspective of history. So we began teaching World History Modern AP exam. It's only the second year that we've offered that AP course at the high school and 100% of the students scored a three or better.
Good for you guys.
Congratulations.
So on the last slide, you can just see where our students scored. Again, 78% received three or better. And then you can see on the bottom, the top areas where students scored four or better. And you see that AP Physics and Pre calc was 85% students scoring four or better. We had more students take AP exams this past year than the year before. And I, again, I have to, you know, thank the Board of Education because the Board of Educ, you pay for every exam in the high school. Students do not have to pay for the exam. And I truly appreciate that support because it's allowed us to really encourage kids to try something they may not have tried before. Because there's no, you know, financial barrier to, to taking that exam. Because the exam, I believe, every year I budgeted for it was Mrs. Hock, it's about $95 per exam. You know, so I truly appreciate your support because we, we've seen our number of AP students increase. And, you know, they continue to score very well on their AP exams, so thank you.
This was wonderful, so thank you so much for being here tonight, for coming out on a summer night and doing this for us. We greatly appreciate it. I, I was a little taken aback by the situation about the East Brunswick with the graduation. I was sitting here and I'm questioning, like, how is that even possible, right? But the fact that we are continuously putting students at the forefront of everything, every decision, that is, that's a win for us. The, the extra couple percentage points, that's, to me, that is bizarre to even worry about something like that when we are making sure that we're putting our students first. I think of a, I have a client that his daughter actually up in Mount Olive was in high school and continued in the 18 to 21 year old program. And that benefited her so much and she's now, you know, out of that. And we're, there's students that obviously need to be moved on to that program. And I think that the fact that that's being counted against us, why, right? Why? What is, what is even the, the point of something like that when we're doing what's right for the child? To me, that's a win for us, so I think that's phenomenal, so thank you for highlighting that and.
I've talked to, Mr. Farrell, our guidance supervisor, we talk about this all the time. We, we try to do it the right way.
Absolutely, it shows.
We don't, we don't try to cover anything up. We just try to work as hard as we can to support the students.
Definitely. And we were talking at our, our retreat last week, you know, North Brunswick is, it's such a wonderful place to live, to grow up, to, you know, to be and to be a part of. And, you know, we're trying to get that, the goal is to try to get that message out to people. And that is like, tonight's presentation, that is a big part of the message. Those AP exams, the scores, we need to do more than just talk about it in this room. Because that is so incredible and I think that, that is, again, what makes us great. It should be celebrated and it should be talked about. So we should internally talk about how we can get that out.
And that's why this year at Academic Recognition Night, it was a little longer than normal because.
We, you know, this, in the fall, the college board will send us, like, the students who really excelled on AP exams to AP scholars. So this year we brought an additional, you know, 50 or so students to Academic Recognition Night because, you know, we felt that we really needed to recognize them.
Absolutely.
So that's why, you know, we did, that was the first time this past year that we recognized AP scholars at Academic Recognition Night.
But it's so appropriate to, to recognize the board for their support. I do want to recognize, because context to me is very important. You know, Dr. Ellis and Mr. Dawson did a study many years ago and it talked about the lack of equity in some areas, particularly AP courses, honors courses. Too many groups being represented in the lower foundational courses. And the, the board, and led by the high school leaders and yourself and you, maybe AP assistant principal at the time. We said, how do we put equity into action? Like everybody talks about equity, meaning fairness, but how is the key, you know, operational phrase? How do we do it? How do we get it done? And one of the ways is that the board committed through the budget that we would pay for every child because we found out many children were eligible to take AP courses, but they wouldn't. Because we said, if you take the AP course, you have to take the test. Otherwise, college boards rank the schools lower because they can't get a feel for the accomplishment of, you know, if you put kids in a class, the college boards want to test those children to give that AP feedback, the data. So this board is committed to making sure every child's AP course, every test was paid for. So I do want to say thank you to the board as well, thank you for their leadership, but also that, that honest work of trying to figure out, how do we operationalize fairness for, across a very diverse landscape in our schools? So thank you, board and Michael, and Mr. Neller, great to hear that success continues.
Yeah, and we offer the Honors Making Challenge. So students who, for whatever reason, their teacher didn't feel that they were ready for an honors AP class, we give students the power with their families to, to waive themselves into an honors class. You know, we give them an April 1 deadline to do so, but we do give them a chance if they feel that they're ready and they can handle the, the responsibility. We do give them the opportunity to waive themselves into an honors and AP class. You know, and that was designed with the idea of equity and trying to give kids who may not have ever kind of thought of taking AP classes or weren't, just for one reason or another, weren't recommended to take that opportunity themselves. So that's helped as well with our, with our AP model.
Just with that, the challenge, are we sharing that more with like parents, like hey, like?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do, we, we do scheduling meetings.
And we do share it every year. We had a, probably one of our highest numbers ever of students this school year, past school year, who waived themselves into honors and AP classes.
That's awesome.
Great.
Good job. One, one other quick comment, yeah, the AP courses and programs is phenomenal, like just the investment that the district makes into our students to take that test. Really, you know, it pays dividends, right, for parents when, when they don't have to pay for some of those courses that they, they can just skip through, which, which is great. Just kind of tying it back with what you talked about before, in terms of like the exhaustion or, or the burnout factor. You know, I've heard comments, you know, just from, from students in, in the past about when, when the AP period comes, right, in, in May. There, there's times when I've heard comments where they have AP tests lined up and now you have other courses who, you know, in, in some aspects, it's, they don't really care that these kids are taking AP courses and, and having to take those tests. But they still have to have their project done the next day or this or that. And I think that really was something I heard a lot from a lot of students about, about that aspect of, of burnout. Something that maybe we can kind of look into to kind of help alleviate, especially since we are putting that investment of money into our AP test. You know, we should, you know, figure out a way to, to allow these students to really focus on that.
No, I absolutely agree. We did talk about that at the school level this year. We did talk about that at the school level this year. And I did ask teachers to be cognizant of the fact that students are taking AP exams and they could be up to three hours long. And it is, you know, very draining on that. So we did talk about that and we will continue to talk about that.
Great.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay. Yes, well, that concludes our presentations for the evening. Thank you all so much again. And board members, thank you for your great questions. This time, we will continue with the rest of our meeting. Mr. Wen, would you please take item number six?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board minutes. Regular public meeting, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Special meeting, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And executive minutes, June twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The minutes are accepted.
Thank you. Are there any communications for the evening?
No communications.
Okay. And we'll move to item eight, our reports. Any old business or new business to discuss this evening?
No, Madam President.
Okay, and we can just then move to your administrative report. How about that?
That's great. Thank you so much. And, oh, Mr. Neller left, but thank you to Mr. Neller, Ms. Chang, for providing that data for Mr. Neller and working with him to get this presentation together. So part of my administrative report, can we, I should have had this out, hand it out, but I'll do this. These are not gifts to the millions of folks, these are, it's informational. This also goes to, oh, we're going to go this way, give you some of those back, just a couple here. If you can get your board member one. So as we're handing out-- Yeah, yeah. As we're handing out, first of all, good evening, everyone. I know we have millions of viewers on this hot summer evening. As we end near July, I can't imagine it going any faster than it went for me. From July one, it's July thirtieth already. And so far, you guys are not sick of me yet.
I was going to say, do you want to run?
No, no one's sick of me yet. That's a good start. A good start. But we had a board retreat, and what you see in a little bit of the priorities, we did some exercising, some carousel work, very important. Then I wanted the board to know, and I shared this with the board president, we had the administration, these cabinet members, go through and look at your work and validate some of the things that we did together. I'm looking at Ms., our VP, I was her partner, and I think we did a great, we did a great job. Our color was gray, bud. Not that we're competitive or anything, but I think everyone did a great job. But we had the administrators do the same thing. Why did we do that? Because we had to see if, alignment is so important, we look at goals. We don't set goals for the sake of setting goals. And if we're going to align district goals, which really drive what the board is supporting, district goals were driving the administrator goals and the school-level goals. Alignment is critical when you look at priorities. And we're endeavoring into doing what we're saying, strategic execution. When you first came back together, I said, we don't have time right now to go through a whole new strategic plan, looking at your plan, looking at the work you all did. It's wonderful. It's really relooking at the new iteration of that plan and how we can get it accomplished. We can make sure we look at effectiveness and efficiencies. Because we owe that to the public, our budget, each other, right? What's working, what's not working, what can we change? How can we get the bang for our buck? And also, how do we put out a focus on that? And we looked at the five pillars that you're all looking at now. So we put into a narrative, and thank you, Ms. Kita, for putting that out, helping me put that narrative together. But I want you to know, this is just the next phase of what this retreat was all about. It really wasn't something we got together in the summer and just to kill an evening. It was really good work. Now, we're going to put that as our priority as we start building out our focus of data sets, our programming, and creating this year-long work towards accomplishing what our strategic plan, our strategic pillars talk about. And how does that work? So by our next meeting in August, we will have further work towards setting those goals to, could be in a nice narrative that we put on a website. And we, you, of course, you folks would certainly approve them or disapprove. But it's all going to be generated from our prior, your priorities, our work, and our current strategic plan, and our current work that how we want to align, how we can get things accomplished going forward. So just something, our thoughts, your words on paper, just little stickies and notes, and it really came to life. And it was a chance for, for this valuable stakeholder, this governance stakeholder, board members, to really have an opportunity to be valued by our administration. You are, but more than just because you support a budget, support programs, you're thinking. You are our reps, you're elected reps, and that you're a big part of, really, the team that we want to make things better and we have to look at things systemically. And so, thank you for that. That's just some feedback that, and we also said, our next iteration of a board retreat will be also a second one in January, right after the reorganization. We'll set up another retreat to see, ask ourselves, how are we doing? How, after the goals are set, our programs are being supported, our, our staff is working towards our data dashboards, looking at gaps, trying to illuminate, to eliminate. We'll be meeting again as a, as a board to look at Retreat Two Point O, to see how we're doing. So it could set us up for the second half of the school year. So more to come, but this, for your notes that-- We took them off the walls, and you might say, what happened to that? Is that going to be thrown away now? This was very important, and we did the exercise with our administration.
Dr. Z, just to interject. I think this is a great consolidation of what we did in the charts. But is this going to be, is there something that we can read out maybe tonight? Or could this be public facing? So I want people to hear--
Oh, I would love for--
I don't know if we could do this, like, we do the code of ethics, if everyone can take one, because I think that it really, this reads extremely well. And I think it is a really good reflection of all the work that we are celebrating and also the actions that we're taking to improve. I'm not sure if you have thoughts on that, if you want to do it later time.
No, I would defer, this is your meeting, Madam President, board members, I would be happy, we're very happy. And by the way, I just want you to know, it wasn't AI, artificial intelligence. It was real intelligence. Thank you, Viskita, for helping us. Yeah, AKA.
Yeah, exactly.
So, no, thank you, and I would love for that to happen, but--
Why don't we, can we read them, read through them out loud right now?
All right. Want to start with Steve?
Sure. I'll start with safety.
Perfect.
All right, for safety, mental health, and social, emotional learning. MBT Schools prioritizes student safety, mental health, and SEL through strong partnerships with local law enforcement and UBHC, as well as implementation of comprehensive safety plans and wellness screeners. While these systems are in place, we continue to address challenges such as budgeting for continued needed resources and the impact of widespread student access to social media.
I'll take number two, student learning and achievement. MBT Schools continues to advance student learning and achievement through a wide range of accelerated, advanced, and varied coursework, along with increased student participation and notable recognition in our performing arts programs. Despite these strengths, challenges remain in closing achievement gaps, securing adequate funding, and meeting the diverse academic and socioeconomic needs of our learners.
Great. Ms. K?
Yes, Madam President. Climate and culture. MBT Schools fosters a positive learning environment for its students by celebrating its diversity and providing access to a wide range of extracurricular opportunities at all grade levels. As part of our rebranding efforts, there is a growing need to share more positive messages with the community and potential district registrants. However, challenges persist in recruiting and retaining a diverse staff and securing sufficient funding to support these efforts.
Excellent. Communications and community engagement. MBT Schools has strengthened communications and community engagement through an expanded social media presence that highlights student, staff, and district activities as well as consistent and accessible messaging via parent square. Ongoing challenges include language barriers, socioeconomic disparities, low community event participation, and the need to rebuild communication, relationships with township officials.
Budget and finance. MBTS Schools maintaining strong fiscal health demonstrated by annual clean audits, successful passage of two referendums in the past decades. No reduction in force, RAFS, and a Board of Education that remains supportive of budget priorities. Challenges including navigating an inadequate state funding formula, rising salary and benefit costs needed to stay competitive with the cost of living, and the impact of unfunded state mandates.
Well, as you could see, and thank you again, Madam VP, for asking us to read that. Because we're very proud of your work. But I wanted the board to know and the community to know that it wasn't a retreat just to say, we did something, got together. It really starts our focus, and I want to thank the cabinet, the central office folks, because they took it serious. Two of our members out there, and Amy, and we did same pairing exercise. Because I want to see that thinking and alignment. But what also is important is, we highlighted some of the great things, but every pillar has a challenge. We know we've got to continue to move forward, because you either get better or you get worse. And it really focuses on, gives us a focus to continue to facilitate and foster the best possible education with such a complex requirement coming from many different areas, right? When you run an organization such as a school district. So thank you again, and more to come on this. But I wanted you to see this initial step forward was something that, we didn't do it in vain, even though it was a lot of fun, there was some meaning behind it. Construction management, so you have a packet, and the public may see us handing out a packet. Just want to give everybody, the board had asked me to look into my experience and make recommendations going forward as we look at this sixty-three point eight million dollar project that was supported in a wonderful passing of a referendum. The work has begun, but this is a multi-stage project. So I want to thank, first of all, Ms. Hock. She was away on vacation, and I had to tell her, stop bothering me, because she kept working on her vacation. Because we were putting out requests for information. She was a big part of that, she's going to be a big part of overseeing this. But we asked for a construction management, as I explained to the, in our, our meeting, in our committee of the whole, that pre-construction, rather than paying for a construction manager to wait for this project to start kicking off, a lot of the planning is being done so we could pay for pre-construction services, planning services on an hourly basis, time and material, and there's no material, so basically just time. And we sent out to three major firms, Epic, Greyhawk, and Bancroft. And they all came back, and I, I gave them a guideline that Ms. Hock and I sent out. And the guideline came back, and it's very interesting. We are ready to make a recommendation, but we know it's very important that we follow a protocol of making sure our operation chair is involved in this decision. It's not fair, as Mr. Carter's a very active participant with this board, and he's on a work mission. I mean, we just, you know, he wants to be here, but we didn't have a chance to go through it. So we feel we'll have this approved, we should have it approved by August thirteenth. We'll take that action, even though it's a committee of the whole meeting, we'll take action. But I think that'll give all of you a chance to look at it as a full committee, if you have any questions. And it'll give us a chance from central office or president to talk to Mr. Carter, or president of operations, because it's a commitment to selecting a firm to be our partner for the next six months. And then we could take a look at it further. Was the return on investment really going well? And we're not taking, we're taking a look at what they call professional services, money built into the referendum, that we're just not spending it for the sake of spending. We're going to make sure it sings the right way and the pre-construction services as we need it over the next six to eight months. So even though it's not a major deal, but it's a major start to how we're going to oversee this project. And I look forward to it, and I said, I want to thank Ms. Hock again for being a big part of that. And also for, you know, listening to me, but she didn't give up most of her vacation. She's in Portugal reading our reports. So thank you for that and staying, because it means a lot to us that we serve the public. It's a big project, it's a lot of money. You did it very, from someone who was not here, I can't take credit for it, but someone who will be here to help make sure that we're on time and on budget. I want to thank, you know, the, the investment that we're making. And although it's going to be supported by the state funds of nearly thirty-eight percent and retired debt, it's still public monies. And it's, we got to make sure we do what we can to make it on time and on budget and get what we promised the community to get. So this is another step. August thirteenth, we'll have a recommendation for everyone, but you have it, you have the contract that went back. I think you could take a look at it, and certainly more sets of eyes on it. We're open to comments at any time, so, okay? Is that, so that's, second, you'll get in your reminder, Friday goes out again, but I want to do it tonight, because again, it's a chance to remind the community. I know we have millions of viewers. So this Tuesday coming, August fifth, from five o'clock to eight o'clock, National Night Out. I want to ask the board to join me and our president and vice president, whoever's available, come on out. It's a community event, we'll have more details for you. You should know, if it rains or bad weather, our schools host the internal, so it'll be inside our buildings. But it's a, it's a great community night. I know years ago, Mrs. Soroka did some tabling, and it's not really a great, that tabling, I think it's more important that we get out and be seen in the community. So we'll be there. Just know, this is an open invitation, a reminder. Everyone's welcome as a, as a board, as we like to, you know, more the merrier, certainly there. And speaking of more the merrier, Ms. Chang will have her showcase, Summer Academy Institute Showcase, Thursday, August seventh, at nine forty-five AM. It will highlight the work that students complete during the summer program. I'm looking forward to that. All board members are welcome. We all know how hard all of you work, and schedules aren't there. So we like to say, listen, we want to invite you, and please come if you can. You're always welcome. In either event, just, can you RSVP, Janine, the administrative assistant in my office? Ms. Kirschewski is very, very good. And I'd like to know, just get an idea, so we could expect and look for you, RSVP. If you know, if you can say, hey, I'm definitely coming, let us know. It'd be great to make sure that we're out there, visible, and, you know, supporting a community event. That means a lot. It's a national night out. And with that, Madam President, a lot of reports, but thank you. I want to thank the board and the staff that are here for the great welcome first month back. I think I felt like I blinked, and it's done. That means it's great. I enjoy every day coming to work, because the challenges are many, but the reward is definitely worth it. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all of those updates. At this time, we do not have any committee reports this evening, so we will move to item nine. Dr. Patel, could you please take that item?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative and committee reports.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The reports are accepted.
Thank you. And at this time, we will take a moment or two to review our agenda for this evening. As stated in our other meetings, in our other regular public meetings, the board receives the agenda prior to, we've all had time to review it. A copy was, a finalized copy was actually sent to us earlier today. And anything new or changed is in bold, so we will start on pages two and three. Pages four and five. Pages six and seven. Eight and nine. Pages ten and eleven. Eleven, excuse me, twelve and thirteen. Pages fourteen and fifteen. Sixteen, seventeen. Pages eighteen and nineteen. Pages twenty and twenty-one. Twenty-two, twenty-three. Pages twenty-four and twenty-five. Twenty-six and twenty-seven. And page twenty-eight, and finally, twenty-nine. Okay, at this time, we can jump back to page two. Does anyone have any comments or questions on anything? Does anyone have any comments or questions on anything? Okay, at this time, we will move to item 11. We'll have a public session on agenda items only. If anyone from the public would like to come and address the board, we just ask that you state your name, and you'll be given three minutes.
All right. I am Kane Ellis, and I am now the Director of Communications and Policy for the district, and I want to take the opportunity to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Zakowski for giving me the opportunity to further my contributions to a district that I truly love. MBTHS was my first teaching job, and I remember a fellow English teacher and mentor, long-retired, Bob Mamoney, telling me that if you're doing this career right, that you'll have as many rewarding moments as you do challenging. And that has been my litmus test in my various positions and has held true. And quite honestly, the reason that I've chosen to spend my career in North Brunswick is because I've always been surrounded by board members, colleagues, superintendents, families, and students, who have helped celebrate those rewarding moments and also worked together to overcome the challenging ones. I'm hopeful that this director position will provide that same professional balance for me. And while I'm up here, I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to formally welcome back Dr. Zakowski. You know, Mrs. Kita, and Mrs. Chang, and I, and many others, have commented that having him back in the board office and seeing him up here on the dais just feels like home to us. And as we know, very few superintendents last 15 years in a district, retire, and then get welcomed back as warmly as we've seen him welcomed back over the last few weeks. So, thank you not only for hiring me, but also for our hiring him back, because it gives me an opportunity to really grow under a strong mentor and leader. And with that said, I look forward to reporting on Monday, and I wish all of you guys a really great rest of your summer, and I'm sure I will see a lot of you during the very busy '25, '26 school year, so thank you.
Well, Doc, just stay up there, you know, I'm going to put you on the spot, thank you for the warm welcome as you, I just want the board to also know that, Dr. Ellis, we heard great improvement of our scores jumped in last year, to my knowledge, that you came in interim to help out in the English department, when, so keep that, it's a very strong department, the high school, but under your leadership, so not only, as you may know, we talked about this in a budget sense, that Dr. Ellis has taken part of a consolidation of two positions, not only as a director, as a cabinet member, which she was doing a lot of the work on a part-time basis, is taking full-time leading that English department in the high school. So, she'll have multitude of jobs, but under her leadership, that the English department's very, very strong, and, you know, Yessenia, Ms. Morales, is doing such great work under your tutelage, now taking over the ELL program, so, and you're vested in North Brunswick as a resident and a family, so we're very excited and proud of all your work and contributions to the community and to our continued work here, so thank you, Doc. And by the way, they didn't vote yet, so I sure hope it's approved, so, anyway, so...
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, we really appreciate it, and best of luck with everything, and we're very lucky to have you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Anyone else on agenda items only at this time? Okay, seeing none, can we please have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting? So, moves?
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to our consent agenda. Vice President James, would you please make the motion of item 13?
Happily, Madam President. I make the motion to approve the following consent agenda items, personnel items one and two, curriculum items one and two, miscellaneous, finance items one and two, and transportation.
Second.
All right, I'll do roll call now. Mr. Ali?
Yes, on all motions excluding curriculum, instruction items two, H and I, 2025 NJASBA workshop, with the exception of the portion that pertains to me, Desiree Ali, from which I abstain.
Ms. James?
Yes, on all motions, including curriculum items two, H and I. Is it, excuse me?
No, including them, except for...
Yes, including them. Items two, H and I, 2025 NJASBA workshop, with the exception of the portion that pertains to me, Alicia James, from which I abstain.
Thank you. Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes, on all motions, including curriculum and instruction items two, H and I, 2025 NJASBA workshop, with the exception of the portion that pertains to me, Maggie Patel, from which I abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
Yes, on all motions, including curriculum and instruction items two, H and I, 2025 NJASBA workshop, with the exception of the portion that pertains to me, Maureen Singh, from which I abstain.
Thank you. Ms. Toth?
Yes, on all motions, including curriculum and instruction items two, H and I, 2025 NJASBA workshop, with the exception of the portion that pertains to me, Haley Toth, from which I abstain.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes, on all motions, including curriculum and instruction items two, H and I, 2025 NJASBA workshop, with the exception of the portion that pertains to me, Stephen Wen, from which I abstain.
Thank you. All the motions are accepted and approved.
Thank you. Okay.
We are very formal around here.
Yes.
So, now, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. And thank you, Ms. Hock, for assisting with moving forward on the wording, we appreciate that. It's not often we have to abstain on different things, so thank you. Okay, so we'll jump to page 29 of our agenda, we're on item 14, after all that. We'll have a public session on any matter, so at this time, if anyone from the public would like to come up to the podium and address the board, we just ask that you state your name, you'll be given three minutes to speak on any matter. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close the public portion?
So, moves. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, number 15 is a motion to go into close, so again, to explain the style, which as super, I always put that there, because during the summer months, we have so many issues going on and so many questions that may take place, I wanted to make sure that if we needed it. So, seeing that there was none coming back, I don't think there's a need to go into it, unless you, the board feels that there was questions, because we, when you go through the HAB reports, and you had so many personnel, as you know, superintendent is giving the authority to hire and move things forward, but with the approval of the board, once it's retroactively approved, so I put that there all the time, you'll see that in the summer. So, Madam President, I see no reason to go and close session, so, that's why I was there.
Wonderful, okay. I believe we're all good on that. Anyone oppose? Okay, thank you all. So, we'll skip item 15 at this time, and we do not need to do item 16 then at this time, so we will strike those two out for the record, and at this time, we will conclude our meeting. Thank you all so much. Can we please have a motion to adjourn?
So, moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.